Good evening. Welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education of Bernards Township. Notice of the time and place of this meeting was provided and copies of that resolution were forwarded to the official newspapers as designated by the Board of Education and to the township clerk. And a copy of the notice was posted on the bulletin board at the Board of Education offices in accordance with the Public Meetings Act. Due to the public health emergency in the state of New Jersey, as declared in Executive Order 103, the Board will be suspending its normal meeting procedures this evening and conducting a virtual meeting. Directions for accessing the virtual public meeting were posted on the district website, These same directions were posted at our intended but available location. We have welcome input from the public. Because this is a virtual meeting, public comment will be handled as follows. To make a public comment beginning at 7:00 PM, email to btconnectc o n m e c t at bernardsvoe.com or text to 908-292-3047. Use "public comment" as the email subject or the start of the text message. Indicate your first and last name and address. This is required for your public comment to be included. Please keep your comments to a maximum of approximately three minutes if read aloud. No public comments will be accepted after Item 16, Board Forum of the Agenda Begins. Mr. McLaughlin, can we have a roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry, there's an additional item, right?
Yes.
If it is necessary for the Board to go into executive session at the end of the meeting, we will provide an estimated length of time for the session and whether any action is anticipated to be taken upon return to a public session.
If I may suggest, why don't we have the roll call first before we pass the next resolution?
Okay, okay. Mr. McLaughlin, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Beckman?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer? Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Salmon?
Here.
Mrs. White?
Here.
Mrs. McCune?
Here.
Mrs. Richmond?
Here.
Mrs. Corn?
Here.
Mrs. Woolridge?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Markarian?
Here.
Mr. Syatt?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mrs. Gray?
Here.
Madam President?
Thank you.
Why don't we do the resolution now? And then we could salute to the flag.
Okay, so can I request a motion to approve the resolution as I read it here? Be it resolved that the Bernards Township Board of Education hereby approves the suspension of its normal meeting procedures pursuant to Bylaw 131 and authorizes this meeting to be conducted as a virtual meeting as described in the statement of public notice due to the public health emergency declared in Executive Order 103. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Corn, thank you. Can we have a roll call, Mr. McLaughlin?
Ms. Beckman? Ms. Beckman?
Sorry, can you hear me? Here.
Yes.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Mrs. Woolridge?
Yes.
Mrs. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Madam President?
Thank you. So we are up to...
Flag salute.
Flag salute to the flag. This is going to be interesting.
I've got a little flag right here.
There you go.
Seriously?
Want to stand up? Hold on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America. And to every government for which we stand. One nation, under God.
Okay, so our next item is going to be the student representative. Jimmy, are you there?
Yeah, hi, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't really know what to say, I guess. Students are confused, scared, excited, but, you know, I don't know, I think it's a lot of big changes and I think I think there was a lot of, I guess, confusion in the last week or so, but I think, especially when we, like, you know, announced that we'd be moving to the distance learning plan, I think the information about that came out timely for everyone involved and, you know, so far, day one, I don't think there's really been any problems that people have reported so far. I think the general expectations and the procedures for everything are straightforward enough. I mean, you know, I think people are a little confused and, you know, a little sad about the things that have to be moved or postponed or canceled. But that's something, I guess, we're seeing, you know, for pretty much everyone all across the country. So I think the Bernards Township students are doing all right from what I can see, as best as we can be.
Does anyone have any questions for Jimmy? And I would just say, hang in there, Jimmy. All right, then, let's move on to our next item, which is the Board Presentation of the Preliminary 2020-21 Budget. Mr. McLaughlin or Mr. Markarian, both?
Yes, I have it. Mr. McLaughlin here. First, let me apologize for not having my image up there. I do have a broken camera on my laptop. The IT guys have a new one for me, but with the push that's going on to get devices out to students and to some parents in our community for this distance learning, it was not the, and needless to say, should not have been the first thing on their list. So hopefully, everyone can hear me well. The presentation itself has been previously distributed this afternoon to all the Board members. And for those of you who are following along via live stream, there was a link to a PDF of the presentation that I'm about to go to, go through, immediately adjacent to the live stream link. So hopefully, all of you that are following along at home have that document there as well. And with that, I will begin the discussion of the preliminary draft of the 2020-2021 budget for the Bernards Township Board of Education. If you'll turn to Slide or Page Number Two, which is entitled Budget Expenditure Snapshot Fiscal Year 2021, Fiscal Year 1920, you'll see just a a macro level view of what the changes are from the final budget that was adopted last year to the budget that we are proposing for the upcoming year. General operating expenses reflect a $2.00, almost $6 million increase. Capital expenses, a $470, almost $5,000 decrease. Subtotal for the general fund is $2,118,085 increase. The federal expenses are anticipated to be flat year over year and debt expenses have a $450 net increase year over year. As we go through the presentation in the next few minutes, we'll drill down into these various numbers and categories of expenditure in some more detail. If you'll turn to Slide Three, which is entitled General Operating Expense Changes, you'll see that at the top, it references the $2,118,535 that I just alluded to at the bottom of the total, on the previous slide, is the total bottom line increase for the budget. The major drivers in the budget this year are, again, not really a surprise, salaries that we are in a personal service kind of industry, if you will, if you can think of government in that sense for a minute. And so predominantly, the thing that we have is staff as a cost. These are contractual increases. The extended school year costs are also up again as our substitute costs. The second largest driver for the proposed budget is employee benefits. And as we go forward into the presentation, I will discuss that in more detail. We did have, as noted here, the primary driver being health benefits and the secondary driver in the employee benefit increase being workers' comp. And I'll talk about that as we get to it. Transportation, we're anticipating an increase in our transportation costs, primarily driven by our contract with the Somerset County Ed Service Commission for the two-front school transportation of our students in district. Current capital outlay is down by $475,649. Primary drivers there are the defeasance or the dropping off, if you will, of the capital grounds lease, which we've fully paid for the Wellness Center and the turf on the Lee Field. That was five years ago. And as of June 30th of this year, 2020, that will be fully paid for. Also, in this year's budget, and not in next year's budget, was a non-recurring capital project to replace door hardware in a number of buildings throughout the district. And then there were other non-recurring smaller IT and general equipment purchases, which were one-time purchases this year, but not anticipated for next year. Instructional supplies and service accounts are down $54,439. There's a footnote to that that I'd like to give to everyone, which is that while overall these accounts are down from budget year to budget year, the actual individual per pupil amount for instructional supplies is actually up $31. And the actual per pupil purchase of service cost is up a dollar. And the reason for that is, and we'll see that as we go further on into the presentation, is that while we reduce the overall gross amount of these budgeted accounts, which are myriad accounts, it's not just one or two, the fact of the matter is that we've continued to see a decline in our enrollment. So while we had this relatively minor reduction overall in these accounts, we still have had an ongoing five-year trend down in terms of enrollment, which is why we're actually spending more per pupil. So on a per pupil basis, students will actually have more spent for these services than they did in the current year. Out-of-district tuition for special education students is up $102,000. I'll talk about that a little bit more. And then there's an almost negligible amount of change in the amount of the outstanding serial bond debt of $450. And I'll talk about that. But if you total all those pluses and minuses up, you're going to come back to the $2.118 million. If you could turn to Slide Number Four, which is Budgeted Fund Balance. This is a quick one. Every year, we have this slide. It ties back to our actual audit, the annual, comprehensive annual financial report that is done for the period ending June 30th of 2019 and presented and adopted by the Board usually in late November or no later than the first week in December. And the amount of money for, from the 1819 budget that was set aside for the current year's budget was $3,028,692. I'll talk a little bit about the difference between that and prior years in a minute. So if you'll turn to Slide Number Five or Page Number Five, you'll see a six-year budget revenue snapshot. And what we really want to focus on are the last three columns. The last column is in yellow, that's the dollars change from the proposed budget for 2021 to the current year, 1920, budget that we adopted last May. It's usually, actually, yes, in May of 19. So the first item up is the fund balance. And you'll see that there's $733,899 more. And that is as high as we've been for two of the last six years. It was noticed that in 1819, we had that number, and 1920, we were down. And the way this number, this amount is produced every year is at, as of June 30th, depending upon the operational results for the year then ending, we set this money aside in what is considered by the state of New Jersey to be a legal reserve offset the budget and the taxes for the ensuing year. And we purposefully set aside additional money in June of this past year because we were anticipating, and you'll see this when we get into further discussion about the budget, an increase in health benefits this year. We weren't sure how much. We knew that after two years of our budget being flat for health benefits, that we had to anticipate some significant increase. And we wanted to be sure, without knowing where other costs at that far in advance were going to be in the budget for this year, this upcoming year, that we had at least some set aside to help us make that budget be balanced at that time. So that's the reason we did that, and that's the reason that the increase is up. The next item there is what was the Ridge Sports Foundation Capital Contribution for the Wellness Center. And as I just mentioned previously, since that capital lease is fully paid as of this year, that those projects are fully paid for and there is no further forthcoming capital contribution from Ridge Sports Foundation anticipated for next year. The maintenance reserve, you'll see that we have $24,000 appropriated or anticipated to be appropriated for next year. And that is significantly less, almost $429,000 plus dollars less than what we currently have. And we did that for several reasons. One, we're able to balance the budget without it, which means that if we have a tighter year coming up in terms of operational balances at the end of 2021, we don't have to replenish those funds to the maintenance reserve. And that is always an objective for us in terms of balancing in the budget. The maintenance reserve is available to us under state statute at any point during the year should we need additional appropriation in plant maintenance by virtue of a resolution of the Board of Education to withdraw funds for a specifically identified purpose for maintenance reserves. So this is a good thing that we don't have to use it to balance the budget at the start of the year. The capital reserve, we never appropriate funds to the capital reserve as out of our budget. That's always done as a year-end process. And if you look back historically, over the last seven years, eight years that I've been here, I know that we have done that pursuant to state administrative code. In June of every year, there's an opportunity, and only in June of every year, for the Board to do a resolution to appropriate funds that result from year-end operating balances, should there be any, specifically to any reserves such as the capital reserve. And so that is when and how we have always done that. And any withdrawals from those reserves are done by a Board resolution as the Board requires them for capital projects throughout the course of its operating year, which you've seen from time to time. Most recently in the past, we've done several when we did all the HVAC projects. We will certainly be doing some soon additionally for the upcoming capital projects that are off-budget that we do through Fund 30 as required by state and governmental accounting standard board accounting requirements through Fund 30 and not through our general operating budget. As a lot of districts have to tap their operating budget to support these, we've tried not to do that so that it doesn't impede the even flow of resources to our ongoing instructional and co-curricular programs as well as our multitude of support costs that we have in services throughout the district for those programs. The next item down is tuition and miscellaneous revenue. The big driver here has always been tuition in the past, but it's also the reason that you'll see a $500,000 decrease. For those of you who were at my presentation last year, and if you look back, you will see that there's been a dramatic drop-off since 1718 in this number. And it's all been driven by loss of special education tuition that we receive from other districts who would send their students to our district. And the reason is not that they're not unwilling to send their students to our district or that they don't have students to send to them to us right now, but rather that we have always allowed those students to come to us on a tuition basis predicated on availability of spaces in given self-contained classes. And as the enrollment in a number of our classes of self-contained students has been increased by resident students, there are fewer seats available. As a result, we're looking at about a $500,000 potential decrease from this year into next. The general tax levy reflects an increase of $1,007,000. That's a 2% increase. I'll talk about that a little bit more in another slide. And then the state aid, and I'll talk about that in a minute a little more, not a whole lot more, is $631,756 more than in the current year. That's the proposed increase. And as you can see, you know, a large portion of that goes to offsetting the loss of tuition revenue that we've had over the prior year. The extraordinary aid number, again, we always anticipate that to be flat as it is always a bit of a card game in terms of knowing what you're going to get. We don't like to build on anything but a sound foundation. And the state does not allow us to apply for the current year or the upcoming year until the year, first of all, is three-quarters over. And then, of course, they tell you what you got for the year after the year is closed. So in June 30th, for example, of 2020, which is the current year, 1920 fiscal year, we won't know how much money they're giving us for extraordinary aid until the beginning of July. The year is already done. So we've always taken this very conservative approach. And to the extent that that number has varied up or down, we have been allowed by the state, as are all other school districts, when they actually ultimately receive that cash, which is usually in August, to set that money aside for one year and then either include it in your budget of the subsequent year or, as in many cases we've done, if we've had significant increases for unanticipated special education placements, which often happens during the course of the year, we have that as a hedge against that increased cost. The student education, excuse me, the Special Education Medicaid Initiative, that's what SEMI is, the item below, that is a $13,000, almost $14,000 decrease. What that reflects is a waiver that we obtained from the state to reflect a modification of their anticipated revenue number for us. They've always identified a number of students that are Medicaid eligible from a financial perspective. But the other qualifying criteria for getting this reimbursement back from the federal government, of which the state gets two-thirds and we would get a third, is that the students receive eligible services and that they are classified. And of that group normally identified by the state, only about a third of those students actually receive the students, excuse me, receive the services that are qualified for reimbursement. So this is a reflection of that adjustment that we've gone through and facilitated with the State Department of Education. The federal grants, as I said earlier, we're anticipating those to be flat. The primary driver for us in terms of revenue source there, stream there, has always been the IDEA Basic and Preschool Grants, which entitle us to about $1.1 million a year. The next biggest chunk are the Title I, Every Student Shall Succeed Funds. And they're about $300,000. And the rest of it is really made up by the Title II and Title III funds. The debt levy is up by $1,700 year over year, which is a result of really one thing. In prior years, we've always had some slight amount of unexpended debt service fund. You'll see that item below. Last, in the current year, it was $1,300. This year, there was only a dollar left. So we had a pretty exacting calculation in 1920 in terms of calculating exactly how much would be there. And so that's the largest part of why we have a $1,700 tax levy increase in the debt service. Offset, of course, by a $117 increase in state debt aid. So when you look at all that, the net increases, that's going to tie back to the $2,118,535 that I talked about in the first couple of slides of our presentation tonight. If we could all turn to Slide Six. I'm not going to take a lot of time with that. Major Factors in the Budget. The state aid increased, as I noted just a minute ago, $631,756. Current programs and services are sustained by this budget. Enrollment in a variety of programs and staff turnover will determine considerations for staff. Let's move to Slide Seven, Lost State Aid. We're not going to spend a lot of time on this one either. It's just there for everyone's reference. Despite the fact that we have received increases in state aid in the last three years, we're still behind when you look back over this, back to 2009, 2010, by $17 million. It's a long road to kind of dig us out of that hole. And we might never get there from this perspective. It's there for those who want to really think about it. But let's move on to Slide Number Eight, which is a 10-year history of taxes. I'm not going to go through all of it. I think the point here is to kind of focus on the highlighted last row, which is the proposed increases for 2020-2021. In terms of the general fund levy, we are proposing a $1.7 million increase, which is 2%. And as I just indicated, in terms of the debt levy, $1,712 increase, which is 300ths, excuse me, 3/100 of 1%. The combined net impact to the taxpayer over the prior year's taxes, budget's taxes, is 1.891%. So if you look back the last three years, that's been pretty constant. In the past seven years, you know, we have reduced our debt levy. We'll have another opportunity to redo some debt restructuring in 2022. Currently, we have a AAA bond rating, and I anticipate that if our balance sheet stays as it has been, that we should be able to retain that. The net tax levy has averaged 1.81% over the past seven years. If you could all turn to Slide Number Nine at this point. That's the Five-Year Budget Expenditure Snapshot. This is really nothing more than a five-year look back of what was actually on Slide Number Two. Slide Number Two was really the 1920 column, the 2021 column. And the difference between the two is just to give you a look back at the years before. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. If anyone has questions, I'm more than happy to answer when we get to the questions segment of the presentation this evening. If we turn to Slide Ten, we have the Five-Year General Operating Budget Change. Again, the thing we really want to focus on here are the the thing we really want to focus on here are the last two columns, fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 21 versus fiscal year 20, or the current year. And as you can see, we're looking at an increase in instructional costs of just under $1.2 million, an increase in support costs of $1.4 million. And overall, for the operating budget, we're looking at an increase of $2.5 million. If we could turn for a minute to slide number 11 at this point. And here we have an additional breakdown of the instructional component that you just saw on the previous page. So this gives you a breakdown of the instructional costs of $49,529,182. What we want to take a look at again are the last three columns here. Let's start with the enrollment, because I did mention that a few minutes ago and how that impacted early on, I think it was in slide number three, the fact that while we had a drop in, say, instructional costs, instructional supplies in classrooms, that the actual per pupil costs had gone up. And here you can see it really in the top row when you look at enrollment. If you look back at fiscal year 1617, our enrollment at the time was 5,530 students, and we're anticipating 5,011 for next year. That's a drop of, from the current year of 96 students in them, but I, by current year, I mean what we anticipated at the time we struck the budget last year. Obviously, when school enrollment, when school starts in September, there's always some fluctuation up or down from that number. But these numbers in this entire presentation, to keep things consistent for for folks year-over-year, are from budget to budget. That said, the first item up there is general education, and you can see that in Gen Ed, we're looking at a $485,971 increase, just under just over 1.6%. The driver primarily there is just contractual salaries. Okay? Special education, I'm going to talk about that in a more detailed slide in a minute, but there is an overall increase of 2.79%, or $426,000. Basic skills and English as a second language, there's an increase of 16.58%. So as a relative percentage, it's high, it's a dollar amount. As you can see, it's significantly lower because it represents altogether to begin with a smaller portion of our operating budget. So it's $172,783 increase. One, we have contractual increases in salaries. And two, I believe we did add between this year's budget and from the time we struck this year's budget and now going into next year, we've added a body to the English as a Second Language program because we have had an increase in the number of ESL students in this, in the district. The extracurricular and the athletics numbers have higher percentages, but again, they're relative to the size of the budgetary component that they represent to begin with. So that said, $43,866 for for extracurricular, primarily driven again by stipends as contractually negotiated. And athletics primarily, again, driven by stipends at 56,707. If I could, I'd like to ask everyone to turn to page 12 for a minute. I don't spend a lot of time on this. We've traditionally provided this information to the public because people have asked. But what you have here are the components of the item that you see in the previous slide, which was in the amber column for general education, the $30,678,561. This is how it breaks down by building in terms of salaries and supplies. If I could, I'd like to ask everyone to turn to page 13, Five Years Special Education is the title for that slide. And it's a five-year look back, but again, what we really want to take a look at are the last three columns. So beginning with the very top row, the special ed enrollment, which did see a decline in 1920 for the first time in a while. We anticipate to be relatively static and not change in fiscal year 2021. However, now we would move down to the MODCOG Self-Continue Program. And you'll see that there is a $42,953 reduction there. That is not because we have reduced staff, but because every year when I make this presentation, I have the conversation about the mobility, if you will, of staff, in particular instructional aides between these programs as deemed necessary by the Director of Special Education and the Supervisors of Special Education. So while we take a snapshot in time of staff that make up a particular program, they often have an operational need to move those staff during the year. And as a result, we see these changes when we take the snapshot a year later to make up the next budget. So that's really the driver there. And also, it's the same reason that you see a change in the learning language disabilities section. There is a new staff member there. There, I believe, we added one LLD person during the year. That accounts for a large portion of that increase there, probably more than two-thirds of it. And the rest of it is contractual increases. For the programs, auditory impairments, behavioral disabilities, and the autism programs, the increases that you see there and the dollar amounts are driven by the BTA contractually negotiated increases. You're going to say in some cases, well, why is it so slow in auditory impairments? Well, we only have one staff member on that line. So that explains that. In terms of the Behavioral Disabilities Program, while the contractual increases are more than 1.6%, we often have turnover from one budget to another in terms of senior staff leaving, being replaced by less senior staff, so they're not as far up on the compensation scale. So that accounts for that often, a change that is less than whatever the contractually bargain rate was. In terms of the resource room, staff alignments, there are a number of those where instructional aides have moved in that line, and also BTA increases. And then for preschool, the reason we have a decrease there is there's no change in the FTE, but we did have turnover savings, as I was saying a minute ago, where often you see staff that may have gone out on leave and are have a, we have a leave replacement, which may be paid less because they don't have tenure in the years of service in, or you may have someone retired that was on the top of the pay guide, and now you've hired someone that's only halfway up the pay guide. In terms of the last item there, the tuition increase, that's $102,000. Last year, we had a decrease there from year-over-year, and I will tell the board and the public what I told you last year, and anytime we talk about this account, it is a snapshot in time, and it reflects the nature and timing of the placements that we know about. And we do discuss these with the Office of Special Services about what they do and don't know, but no one has a crystal ball in terms of what's going to change even during the course of a year. Sometimes a student's placement may change as a result of a change in their need, and it may have been anticipated that it was going to be service A and B, and now it's service A through D, and/or it's a completely different placement. So the nature and timing of placements for students that are placed out of district has a direct bearing on the shift and the volatility, if you will, of what happens in this account year-over-year. If we could turn at this point to slide 14, I'd like to discuss the support services for the budget, and what you have here is a five-year breakdown. But what we want to focus on primarily for the purposes of our discussion tonight are the last three columns again, fiscal year 2021 in amber, and then the comparison of dollar change for fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 20, as well as a percentage change. So the first item here, of course, are the health services provided in the district, which are our nursing services. What you see here is primarily driven by contractually negotiated salary increases. Some people may question, are are contractually nominal amounts are not that high, but depending upon where you are in the guide and the mix of staff that you have, maybe more senior, they may get more or less than that amount. Related services are for things like occupational therapy and physical therapy and services that specifically are specified in a student's individualized education plan. And the increase that you see here, $65,000 of that are identifiable additional related services. Remember I said a minute ago, we do reach out to the Office of Special Services to identify at the time we're building the budget for the known students and anticipated students, what their needs may be in the upcoming year. And in addition to that, with the balance of that increase are basically contractually negotiated salary increases. Go back to my third slide of this presentation this evening where I showed that $1.4 million of the 2.18 that we have as an increase for general operating budget relates to salary increases. We are, you know, an intensely focused, excuse me, and we are a preponderance of our, our budget is driven by personnel costs, obviously, because what we do is provide service to to students, obviously, education to students. Extraordinary services, we have an a a decrease there. This is really driven by student placements. Again, it relates directly to my comment a minute ago about the nature and timing of placements. And in this case, we are looking at a combination of 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 students at this point in time who are actually having some consolidation of services through the changes in their IEPs, and as a result, we're seeing this decrease. The next item really is guidance services. You know, it's really contractual increases there. It's driving that, it's salaries. The child study team, we have an increase there. That's more than the the contractual increases. Really, that's because we have, one, an increase in home instruction of about $20,000 there, and we have also a number of folks returning from leave. Remember a minute ago, I said sometimes we get, you know, savings in a given year because we have people out on leave and we anticipate that, and we only budget for the leave replacements costs, which tend to be generally less, thanks to the initiative of our Human Resources Department. But in this case, when folks do return that are tenured, and we often see an increase in the ensuing year, and that's a a large part of why we have a more than 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 normal increase in the cost in the child study team for the upcoming year. Media Centers has a decrease of about 1.95%. Really, that goes back to my original comment early on about the decrease in the cost for instructional services and supplies. But again, keep in mind that overall, for students, we're spending more. Supervision and improvement of instruction, $62,000 of this increase relates to curriculum writing increases that are needed year-over-year, and the balance is really contractual increases. For central services, which are the front offices in your buildings, they are the board administration, and they are IT, we're looking at a 1.36% increase. We've done some efficiencies there to try to save a few dollars, obviously. Operations and plant maintenance is flat year-over-year. There's no increase, there's no decrease, obviously. Transportation, I talked to early on about the fact that we were, and I'll talk a little bit more about transportation and ensuing slide, anticipating an increase of $175,000 year-over-year. Employee benefits is the next item up, $953,000. The bulk of that, the lion's share, is really the health benefits increase. And I did allude to that early on in that we've had in the 1920 and 1819 years, the last, the two preceding years, which were the first two years that we were self-funding our health benefits insurance, our budget has been flat. We've been able to be flat. However, we anticipated at some point we're going to have an increase, and what we're looking at here is reflective of an increase in the health benefits component of our employee benefits mix. So employee benefits includes everything from the board share of social security and pension contributions and tuition that's contractually negotiated for staff pursuant to variously collective bargained agreements to, you know, paid leave time that we give to folks. The biggest driver in there, of course, is health benefits, and that's the biggest driver here. That's what's driving this. In total, we're looking at a 2.89% increase in support services costs. If I could get everyone to turn at this time to slide 15. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. It's there for your reference, and then go immediately to slide 16, which is our last slide tonight. That's the fiscal year 2021 transportation budget. So starting at the top, you can see what the trend has been in terms of students that we've transported. And there is a correlation between the number of students that we've transported in district for general education, which is what that top row is, to the decrease in enrollment that we talked about a few slides back for the districts, for the district. You'll see that it's not quite as dramatic because of two factors. One, the the mix of students that live within the legally mandated distance from either elementary or secondary is kind of consistent in terms of the number of kids that we have. And I don't know how to make that a more clear image than what it is, other than to kind of think of it as folks basically, you need to have maybe a factor of four kids leaving the district to get the one or two that we need to reduce off the rolls for busing. Because when you think about our enrollment, traditionally, we have never had 100% eligible for transportation. Even at our high points, we're somewhere around two-thirds, and that two-thirds generally includes students that are subscription busing students. So they're not even folks or students that would qualify for the free busing per se. That said, and I don't want to dwell on it too much, we're looking at it and assuming it will be based on the numbers that we have right now in terms of enrollment, relatively flat year-over-year. We're looking at an increase in the the budget for to-from general education students of $74,000. We're looking at, as you can see, slight increase in the percentage of buses, bus seats filled. We're at 83%. That's because we have had a significant, prior to 1718, we did a consolidation of buses. We didn't have that level of 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 ridership on a bus. So we've been more cost-effective in terms of getting more students on a bus. And you can see that while we've had significant increases over that period of time in the cost that we've paid to the Ed Service Commission, the cost per seat has gone up, but the ridership percentage of buses used has gone up. So it's a battle that we constantly, you know, work at in terms of trying to do it as cost effectively as possible. The number of special education students transported in district is the next set of rows that I'd like everybody to take a look at. You can see some decline in that. Again, that has to do with the mix of students and their IEPs. And again, it also is driven some to a certain extent by the decline that you saw in the previous slide this current year in terms of total classified students in the district and the expectation that that'll be sustained next year. You can see that ridership there as a percentage of bus seats used has never been that high. That is because we generally have only seven to eight students on a given bus in these types of in-district special education transportation scenarios. And we're looking at overall a twenty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollar increase in that component of our contract with Ed Service Commission. The number of special education students transported out of district, we are assuming that that is going to be about twenty-eight students for next year. And that number is relatively constant, has been relatively constant for the last three years. It's a relatively high number relative to the number of students that we have going out of district. We have about thirty-eight to forty-eight students going out of district. But there are some students whose parents decide that they would like to transport them and they do that on their own. So the cost for that, we are expecting to go up about twenty-one thousand two ninety-four. And the cost per seat there is about seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. So it's an increase over the prior year. And then in terms of the total to-from school transportation budget, it's four point nine million. That's a hundred and twenty-two thousand two eighty-four. And before anybody raises their hand and says, and asks me why, in the previous slide, I said the increase was a hundred and seventy-five thousand. The difference is basically explained by a couple of things. Of the the cost of, which we don't break out here, the curricular, co-curricular busing that we do is 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 really a large portion of that. And that piece is not reflected here, basically. So at that point, at this point, I'm sorry, at this point, I'm open to questions from members of the board.
Does anyone have any questions? Nobody? That must mean you did a really thorough job, Rod.
Either that or I put everyone to sleep.
I think we're all still alert.
The latter.
I would add just one thing, the increase in athletics is also explained by the board budgeting for unified sports for the first time.
Okay, so if there are no questions, shall we move on to the superintendent's report?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Rod.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Rod.
Thanks, Rod. So just a few things, obviously, we have, you know, just one item under superintendent's report. If we could get a motion and second for that. It's our HIB report, standard item every board meeting. And maybe we could do the motion and roll call for that. And I could share a few items.
Can I have a motion, please?
A motion. Ms. White? Second?
Mrs. McCune?
Yeah.
And a roll call, please.
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Mrs. Waldridge?
Yes.
Mrs. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Madam President?
Sorry.
It's back to Nick now for this. Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you. So just a few things, obviously, the fact that we are doing the meeting in this manner is indicative of a extremely unusual situation everybody's in around the country and the world with respect to this coronavirus. So I just wanted to take a minute and, you know, reach out a big thank you to everyone that has been working really around the clock over the last few days, everywhere, really, it feels like, but probably, you know, what I see the most of locally is our our staff who have really been going above and beyond to create a distance learning environment for the students and to try to communicate with families. I know in particular, Mr. Syed and Mr. McLaughlin and Ms. Fox, Mr. Blender, just a few of the people I've worked closely with, but truly the entire administrative team, all the staff, they've just done a tremendous amount of work and I just wanted to thank them for that. And also, you know, acknowledge the the community, so many people have been positive and, you know, sending encouraging emails and thank yous. And that's, you know, that's what we're really trying to be about right now is to, you know, stay positive despite some pretty rotten circumstances. I think we are all acutely aware of that. And everybody is having to deal with work challenges and challenges with daycare and everything. So, you know, we feel each other's pain and we lift each other up to try to take good care of one another. And I've seen a lot of that happening and I just appreciate all the support and all the positive emails, thank yous that have been sent our way. Apologize if I haven't gotten back to all of them, but we've gotten a lot of them and it's much appreciated. Just to kind of remind folks of a few things, you know, pretty much everything has been set up on the district webpage. From that webpage, front and center in the homepage, you'll see sections of resources for parents, students, staff, and a whole wealth of resources on the on the health side of this issue. Our coordinator of school counseling, Rita Zerbera, and all the school nurses have contributed mightily to putting together some documents, working together with the health department and our health officer, Lucy Fortjean. We've really tried to communicate with parents what's going on and why is it that schools are closed and what is social distancing? And that's a difficult topic in terms of the social distancing. There's there's been a lot of questions that have come in and I've tried to redirect people to the explanations and resources that the medical folks have helped us to put together in terms of what's appropriate with students. And honestly, it's a it's a constantly changing picture that is, you know, I think even more serious now than it was a few days ago. I was I was looking at Rich Shallow's message that the coach has sent out and, you know, it was very positive. Talked about not holding captains practices and things like that and maybe, you know, even doing ones and twosies for for practice. But, you know, at this stage of the game, you know, we're really looking for students to to give each other their space, not to be getting together for social events and playdates and, and, you know, giving giving each other that buffer of six to ten feet. It's a challenge, you know, and I think everybody understands how hard that is. But if you watch the governor's address today at all, the one thing that he reiterated quite a bit was that we're in a serious situation and we need to take that social distancing very seriously. I think the measures that the state is is putting in place kind of reinforce that message. I wanted to thank Hank Werner. Hank was was nice enough to kind of re-watch that that address and try to put together a couple notes for me because I didn't have a, I didn't have the time to watch every minute of it. Hank is our director of safety and security and he did share a few notes that I that I wanted to mention and and truthfully, it's really about that social distancing, trying to minimize non-essential travel and, you know, being very thoughtful about not getting together in groups. Also to be, you know, aware of each other's stress, you know, it's a stressful time. Trying to give each other support, try to take care of of our our health, not just physically, but mentally as well, because it it's a tough time. And sorry about my phone ringing. And I recognize that, I think we all do, and and it's it's a time to, you know, pull together as a community, a time to support one another and a time to just show each other a lot of grace and patience. And I've seen a lot of that and I just want to, again, reiterate how thankful I am for that. One final thing that I do want to highlight as well is that, you know, we're we're kind of building the airplane midair, as they say, in terms of the distance learning. We do need the support of parents, I know I've gotten a tremendous amount of that. But it it extends out to the students as well. The students need to remember that although they are in these virtual classroom environments, they are still in classroom environments and, you know, all the rules still apply. Students need to be sensitive to how they talk to each other online, just as if they were in a classroom. We need everybody's help in that regard, we need the students, we need the parents, we need the teachers. Everybody needs to be reminded that, you know, just because you're chatting virtually or in a virtual classroom, you know, we still need to be respectful of one another. We need to be mindful not to use cameras or pictures inappropriately. We need to be mindful of the words that we put into our messages and, you know, not not create any situations that are problematic. I spoke to the director of IT today, occurred to me that we should remind the students of the rules that go along with our acceptable practices associated with the use of technology. So we will be reminding the students of the rules that they agreed to when they opened up their Genesis accounts. At the beginning of the school year, we shared those those rules with kids and asked them to sign on to them for their use of technology. So we'll reissue those en masse to the students and remind them of, you know, the rules only because, you know, we want to make sure that people are safe and we want this environment to be positive, as positive as as a regular classroom, if not more positive, because we're going out of our way to to take care of one another. And our students are going out of their way to make their households happy places to be for both parents and kids. So, you know, we all, we all have to put a little extra effort into that and and I'm asking for the students' help with that, the parents' help with that. And I just can't thank everybody enough for how helpful, supportive and encouraging people have been. So, you know, let's keep it going, let's stay positive and, you know, we'll get through this. I've gotten a few questions that I could try to take a, just another minute or two, if you would indulge me. You know, one of the questions that, you know, has come up pretty regularly is related to, you know, when when are we coming back? And how do we decide when we'll come back to to class? When we'll reopen the schools? You know, it's a it's a difficult question, one I don't think that we can answer right now. You know, when when we we were looking at this a few days ago, you know, everybody was talking about sort of a two-week period at a minimum. I think as the situation has evolved and as we listened to the governor's address today, it's pretty clear that it may well be longer than that. And it's difficult to know exactly how long, you know, we're relying on the health experts, we're relying on the guidance of the experts that can tell us when the environment is is appropriate to come back together. And when we get that picture, and I don't know when that will be, obviously, we'll communicate closely with with folks about how that's going to go. But really, it it comes down to how this began and that is, you know, with the health situation. And when that health situation seems like it's improved enough and we've been guided that it has, then we'll certainly share as soon as we can as to how that relates to an ability to get back to normal business, if you will. So that is a tough question and I wish I could give you a better answer, but that that is what it is at this time.
Nick, was there more that you were gonna answer questions on?
That's what I had for the time being, I did. You know, I did wanted to make sure that folks knew that our district webpage does have a question and answer section for parents. As we get questions that come in, we can certainly kind of maintain that page and keep it up to date. You know, it's it's a, it's an ever-changing situation, so we understand that questions are going to come in. We want to try to provide answers to folks, so as they kind of come our way, we sort of see frequently asked questions. We can put them to that document and, you know, steer people that way as as a way of getting information. But, you know, the staff have been great, everybody has been trying to be responsive via email. So I hope that people are feeling supported in terms of having their questions answered. And the only other thing I can I can say with respect to that, the fact that, you know, there are different times out there, you might have seen that in terms of, well, this district is closed for this long and that district is saying they're closed for that long. I think everybody is is, you know, waiting to figure out when they might be able to come back and, you know, why is it that some districts are putting different schedules out there? And I think it has a lot to do with the particulars of their school calendar, you know, when is their spring break? You know, so if if they extend to this day or that day, then spring break kicks in based on their school calendar. They might be advertising a different return date right now than we are. Obviously, our spring break is pretty late, so we started with the with the two-week approach. And I imagine probably by the end of this week, I'm hoping that we'll have a better sense of where we are in the long run. But that may not happen, you know, and and we may have to be patient with the understanding that when we have more information, we will, we will pass it along.
So before we go to public comment, I'd just like to take the opportunity, and I know fellow board members will join me in saying, we cannot thank the administration and the staff enough for all the hard work that has gone into this crazy week from, well, weekend, few days from Friday, when the the first memo came out from the Department of Education. Mr. Mark Carrion, Ms. Fox, Mr. Syed, all their team, the teachers have been unbelievable. The communication has been incredible and I think the community in general, thank you as well to you because the response has been so very positive. The the compliments and the kindnesses and the appreciation that has been stated verbally and in text messages and on social media has been really, really, really nice to see and hear. And to Mr. Mark Carrion's point, people are supporting each other, or at least seem to be, and working together and facing these challenges in, I guess, the best way possible for the time being. So thank you to all of you and to our staff and and to the families of Burners Township. and to the families of Berners Township.
So, I appreciate that very much. I know that, uh, we have a system for, uh, collecting, uh, public comment that is set up via this, uh, live stream through both texting and email that, uh, Ms. Gray outlined at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, and I believe that, uh, Ms. Fox has been kind enough to kinda collect those comments and, uh, what we would, what we had thought was, um, if you wanna open that public comment, uh, we would, uh, ask Ms. Fox to, to kinda read into the record, uh, the first and last name and address of, of the person sending the message and, uh, read into the record what the comment is.
Yeah, Mr. Mark Carrion and, and, and Madame President, yeah, I'd just like to add, normally we do a first public comment session on agenda items and then we do a later one on non-agenda items, but because of the method by which we're doing this, I'd like to suggest that at this point, we just take whatever public comments we have at this point, because otherwise trying to distinguish what's on the agenda or not will probably be difficult. Just take whatever public comments we have for now and then at the end of the meeting, we can have another session for any additional public comments we receive.
Okay. Shall, shall we read the, the preface to public comment or are we dispensing with that because we don't have anyone coming to the microphone?
I think you can dispense with that this evening.
Okay, terrific. So, Ms. Fox?
Sure. We have one public, public comment at this point. Uh, Melanie Dupuy, 70, Quincy Road, Basking Ridge, New Jersey. Good evening. This is Melanie Dupuy, co-president of the BTEA and social studies teacher at William Annan. I want to take a moment and thank the teaching staff, aides, secretaries, students, administration, and parents for the support and hard work during this transition to distance learning. I know this has been difficult for everyone, but I have just been blown away by the hard work of our staff and administration and the flexibility and grit of our students. We really have an amazing district here and our teachers are dedicated to connecting with our students and providing a meaningful educational experience. Together we will make this work. Thank you to everyone for their commitment to our students. I know that together we will get through this difficult time. And that is the only public comment at this time.
Thank you. So then, um, the next item on the agenda is the finance committee report. There's necessarily a report, but we have, um, items to, um, vote on.
I, I see something on approval of minutes.
I skipped over it, you're right. So, we have the approval of minutes. May I have a motion, please?
I'll get a motion.
Uh, Mrs. Corn?
I'll second.
Robert, and Mrs. McCune, thank you. Um, and a roll call, please.
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Mrs. Waldridge?
Um, yes, on the February 24th. Um, I need to abstain on the March 5th.
Oh.
Mrs. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Madam President?
Now, we can move on to the finance committee report. So, can I have a motion for the, to move the items first, please?
I'll do it.
Uh, Mrs. White?
I can make the second.
Uh, Mrs. Schaefer? And then a roll call? Oh, no. Do we have a report or, um, anything to share on the items on the, um, agenda?
Um, I can just run through the items quick. The finance committee is meeting, uh, Wednesday. Um, so just on, on the agenda tonight, uh, number one is a standing item. Number two is acceptance of a donation from the Society for Science and the Public in the amount of $2,000. Number three is acceptance of a donation from the WHAMs PTO for purchase of, um, some technical, uh, items, like a 3D printer, Chromebooks, and an Epson, uh, poster board printer. Um, number four is tentative, approval of the tentative budget that Mr. McLaughlin went over tonight. Number five is approval of a contract with John Standish Parent Architect for Provision of Construction Administration Services. Number six is, uh, retain, retention of US Omni to administer the district's 403B retirement plan. And, and number seven is, uh, an amendment related to the approval, uh, from, um, previous board meetings where we approved the Ridge Sports Foundation for the Paver Project in front of the Wellness Center. So, there was a change to, um, some of the items that were planned and this is approval of a new, um, work, work-related project, work-related, um, uh, outline for the project.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, then can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Mrs. Waldridge?
Yes.
Mrs. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Madam President?
Thank you. Um, our next item is the personnel committee report. Uh, the personnel committee meets this Friday and we have one item on our agenda. Uh, so if we can have a motion. Uh, motion for the one agenda item?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mrs. McCune, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lauren. Uh, Mrs. Beckman?
That's okay.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Mrs. Waldridge?
Yes.
Mrs. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Madam President?
Thank you. Um, for the following items, the board, um, previously agreed that, um, committee reports for meetings already held would be held off in the interest of our, our new platform here being new to all of us and at the risk of there having been any problems, we had decided we would put them off knowing that we have a meeting next week. So, the Policy Curriculum Wellness Committee reports, if they are to be reported this, uh, you know, will be reported next week. So, I guess we're up to public comment on non-agenda items. Ms. Fox, did we have any other comments come in?
Yes, I did. There's one question. Stacy Irvine, 42, Mount Airy Road. If it's not too late, I had a question about the budget presentation. On Slide 14, there is an almost $400,000 decrease in extraordinary services. I'm wondering if you could provide some examples of what would be considered extraordinary services. This line item wasn't explained in as much detail as some of the other budget lines. Thank you.
I can speak to that if Madam President would like me to.
If, if you're, if you're able to do so now, I, I-
Absolutely. So, I, I, I think what I said basically, uh, at the, at the time was that, uh, there are a couple of factors that contributed changes in a lot of these special education service accounts where we're purchasing services from outside service providers and the kinds of things that are provided, uh, in, for extraordinary services could be one-on-one nursing services or they could be, uh, extraordinary, uh, behavioral types of consultations and services that are unique. And I don't wanna be overly specific because I don't wanna specifically identify given students. However, uh, what we have seen between this year's budget and next year's budget is that the services which were disaggregated in the current year for some students have been able via the individualized education plan approved and put together by a child study team to be aggregated and provided by one service provider in some cases. And as a result, that consolidation of services has resulted not only in the same level of service to the student, but in a more cost-effective manner of producing it. Hopefully, that gives some additional insight into it.
Thank you. Um, and, Ms. Fox, that was, that was the only other, uh, comment or question?
Yes, that's it.
Okay.
Karen, I wanted to see for the, um, just for the liaison committee, I know we're not-
Absolutely.
Um, because I did get an email. All the, um, like, the municipal alliance stuff is canceled. I know it's probably, everyone probably knows that already, but I just wanted to reiterate, you know, we had all those presentations, the fentanyl factor, um, uh, and, uh, so everything is, is now, I don't know if they're canceled or put on hold for now, like everything else, just wanted to put that out there, so.
Okay, great. I was wondering.
So, I could speak, yeah, I'm sorry. I could speak to that issue a little bit also. So, um, we are definitely working through our list of events and field trips for the future. Uh, we have basically shut everything down through, uh, the 29th of March and for the events that are occurring well beyond that, we, we pretty much have to handle those, uh, one at a time, uh, and communicate with the stakeholders for each field trip. Um, and we've tried to handle some of the bigger things out there in terms of the junior prom. Uh, I know the principals communicated about that issue, uh, and I know that, uh, I can communicate, I have also communicated about the junior prom and the, uh, DC trip. So, uh, as events are further away from where we are now, uh, we'll have to, um, evaluate each of them individually and continually communicate with the stakeholders as to what might be running and what might not be. So, that'll be an ongoing project.
Thank you, Mr. Mark Carrion. So then, our next item would be Board Forum. Do any, uh, board members have anything for Board Forum?
Um, I just wanna say that, um, I, I, I was really impressed with everything. Like, today went very smoothly. My, my two kids who had to get up, which I loved, and check in by 8:30 and then, um, and they were, I have to say, the work, you know, I, I felt like they thought it was gonna be like a kind of a blow-off thing a little bit, but they were like, wow, this is real work. I had to really, and I was so happy to see that because they're really taking it seriously and they had to sit there and do, you know, some couple hours of real work, which is, is good. It's what they needed because, you know, they were bored after five minutes of being under quarantine. So, um, I was really impressed with all the emails I got from the teachers and it just really went smoothly. I was, and, and my daughter, Lill gets a little, you know, she has the extra help and, you know, so it's, and all that went very smoothly and I was just really happy that, um, you know, it, uh, impressed with how well it went. Um, and I, kudos to everybody. I just was, um, and the kids were too, actually. The kids were impressed with what they had. So, that was, that's saying something, actually, really.
I also wanted to say that the teachers are really, really responsive. I know my kids had some questions and they, you know, emailed them or submitted them and it seemed as within minutes the teachers had responded to answer whatever questions had come up.
Yeah, I, I also was gonna chime in and say, we, my kids had a very, very positive experience the first day. We got, like, amazing emails from all of their teachers. Um, I just thought it was really cute. Um, Dr. Oliver read a story in his morning message to the kids and Trevor sat and he was so happy to see him, like, on video, talking to him. It was just amazing.
That's what we're hearing from, from a lot of people in the community. So, I, overall, obviously, given these difficult circumstances, everyone seems to be faring pretty well with, you know, the unbelievable preparedness that, um, our teachers came to the table with. Um, so-
I just wanna make one comment, too. I, I like that it started at 8:30 because that's gonna be when, uh, the new school session will start in the high school and, you know, hopefully. Um, so it was nice to see, oh, gosh, they can sleep until, you know, 7:45 or, um, they, they, yeah, it was nice. And it went very smoothly and my kids also thought it was gonna be kind of a blow-off and it was funny because they got up, they signed in before 8:30 and then they kinda turned it on and worked all day with their teachers and they were surprised how much work they had. But it was great, in a great way.
We're the envy of a lot of districts, too, because there are so many parents who are struggling right now to figure out what to do about their kids and learn for the next five weeks. So, they're very, it, it's been awesome.
I agree. I have a daughter who's a teacher and they, they've been told not to teach because they don't have a plan and they don't have enough technology. We, we really are blessed with our staff and what we have to be able to facilitate, um, both, you know, what people in the community have themselves and the way we've been able to, um, you know, help out those who needed a little extra, whatever it was, a Wi-Fi hotspot, things like that. So, um, I think in general, obviously, it's, it's, it's so much better, as Ms. Schaefer pointed out, than, than it may be in a lot of other places. Um, and, anyone else for a Board Forum item? Okay, then, um, I guess our next item is, sorry for the dinging in the background, um, is adjournment. Um, yeah, I'm gonna-
Yeah, before we adjourn, Madam President-
We'll move to executive.
Yeah, I think we have to-
Yeah, no, I have that here. So, before, before we adjourn, um, the board, um, was notified prior to the meeting that there is a, uh, contract item that we will need to go into executive session for. That executive session will take place after the adjournment of this meeting. There will be no further public, um, agenda items following that meeting. So, this will conclude, uh, you know, if we vote for adjournment here, this will conclude the public meeting?
I, yeah, I would, I, I just suggest, I don't think we need to vote for adjournment at this point. Uh, I would just make, I would just have someone make the motion to go into executive session. And you've, you've already explained very well, actually, Madam President, that after executive session, uh, the board will not be taking action and we will, we will not be returning to the live stream. Uh, but, uh, the meeting technically is still continuing while we're in executive session. So, let's just have a motion to go into executive session and then, uh, and then we'll adjourn at the end of the executive session.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, so if we could have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, Mrs. Corn and Ms. Goff-
Second.
I mean, Ms. Schaefer. I do that all the time.
It's okay.
And so, um, I guess by a show of hands, all in favor?
Just, you could say aye.
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 Any ayes? Okay.
Motion passed.
But, so the motion passed. Board members, check your email. There will be a separate invitation for the executive session.
Is it okay to take a bathroom break between-
Yes, there's, there's a built-in break for exactly that reason, Jen. Can we just plug into this? Okay.
Yeah. See you in a minute.
And we're ending the live stream now.